Thank you. It is Tuesday, November 1st at 7:00 PM, and I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees meeting to order, and I have a short invocation, and it says, "Thank you, dear Father, for the love you have shown us and this nation. We pray that you continue the blessings to bless us and help the economy grow stronger and lead us to the point such as high standards that the world will notice that you truly do have your hand upon us." Roll call, please.
Trustees McGurran?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Noonan? Absent.
Pike?
Here.
President Wacken?
Here.
And Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the Regular Board Meeting of October 4, 2022. Move to approve. Thank you. Brian's your second?
Second.
Thank you. Kirk, discussion amendments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as presented saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three, comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Dan?
Hello, I'm Dan Schmidt, North Hudson resident, live at 756 Summit Lane North. So I'd just like to speak about a couple of issues from the minutes of the Finance Committee. From October 19th, you indicated you looked at the interest, or at least the opportunity to be a member of the Economic Syncroy EDC, Economic Development Corporation, and again, you decided that that wasn't something you wanted to do. I've worked in banking and lending my whole career, and I worked with the EDC when it was very first formed, and I have seen a lot of good things done by the EDC in terms of working with municipalities for business development, for attraction of businesses and things like that. I know you recently had your financial advisors here talking about TIF districts and what those are and how they work and things, and I could tell you that the EDC directors are very well versed on that type of way to use and enhance development, et cetera. So I'd just encourage you to take a good look at that. They don't do what the Chamber does. Being a member of the Chamber is not anything at all like participating in the Economic Development Corporation, and it would be a resource for you to use, for Melissa to be able to call on and things like that, and they would help to promote properties that are available for development or for sale in the village as well. That's one of the things that they do. So, on that subject, and then I just want to talk again a little bit about the village levy in terms of using the new construction. I do see the comments in there that, you know, indicate a, the paragraph is attributed to Melissa, is the way I read it, so I believe it's information you shared from after speaking to aylers. You commented that the approach the village is using is financially prudent, and I'm not here to say that it's not prudent. I think, from my perspective, by not capturing all the new growth and the revenue from that new growth year over year over year, you're not keeping the scale of the Village of North Hudson services at the same level as the village itself. So if you continue to do that, you're just going to get further and further behind in terms of being able to provide services, to improve capital as it's wearing out, like sewers and streets and things like that. So I think it's a perspective. I think how you're doing it isn't, I'm not saying it's wrong, I think it's too conservative. I think how you have to manage it is based on what the state statutes have boxed the municipalities into. It's not, you know, you guys don't have a blank sheet of paper to work from. You've got to work within the guardrails of the state statutes, and I feel like continuing down this path is just going to lead you to be further and further behind when, you know, the levy in pure dollars increases by a third of a percent year over year. I mean, I know you're concerned about being able to figure out how to pay the employees adequately, and you're looking at how to, you know, perhaps make changes, where to take money from and things like that. I don't think any of this is easy. I never would have ever intended to imply that I thought it was, or think that it is. So I just want you to think about that. I know you're, you know, the train's way down the tracks for 2023 budget, but when you make statements like the village captures the full amount, that's really misleading because the net increase of new construction is $29,000 based on your own minutes, and you can increase the budget 5,600. I know managing the debt service is a harder thing to do, but I think that's the kind of stuff that the professional firms that you use for financial consulting can help you do. So that's, I guess, my perspective on it, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Dan. Next.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Lorbekki Mathia, and I'm on 210 Seventh Street North, and I want to say first, Stan, I'm glad you're feeling better and you're here. That's good news, and I'm glad to hear that and see you. And the first thing I just wanted to mention was the telecom tower discussion. I do think there are many citizens' concerns about interference with city, or citizen communications, as well as fire and police and site issues and possible health issues, many different things, and I think that it's not a good practice to have a business monitor itself that doesn't have any checks and balances in it, and so it would be a cost to the village to monitor. And then also, there's community models of legislation in other communities I think it would be worth looking at to see, to head off things. Next, I just wanted to go back to my request that I would love to have Stan address the issues of if he's still an Oath Keepers, part of that organization. Obviously, anybody can be part of any organization, but that organization was leading in attacking officials at the Capitol and the police, injuring many and leading to deaths, and those were individuals who pledged service to the Constitution to uphold it. And so it wasn't a very respectful statement to say in the newspaper or to repeat here that you can't denounce anyone who pledges an oath to the Constitution. Let's look at what leaders from that organization did. And also, there are concerns about votes, that there were fake electorates, and there was the Oath Keepers and Proud Boys and different people who were part of the movement to push fake electorates here in Wisconsin. So that would be all of our votes get to be tossed out for somebody else's vision of what we should have voted? And so those are concerns that do come up because we're having another vote, and just to feel trust in the leadership, that the leadership cares about the Constitution's state, national and public service, not a service to another agenda, which some of the Oath Keepers do. I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying we need clarity, because that organization came from some good beginnings, like to have oaths to marriages and things, and then it seemed to morph. So we want a welcoming community and a trust in those who serve us in elected office, that they are supporting the Constitution and the laws and different things. So I thank you all for your service, I really do, and I would like clarity on that, please, in a respectful way, not putting us down by saying, yeah, I wouldn't denounce anyone who's for an oath, that's what they're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Yakub, 81 Lockwood Court, Hudson. I just wanted to thank you all for having the strength of character to hear from us. I mean, this is not something that all countries enjoy. In fact, many countries across the globe do not give citizens the ability to speak to their representatives. So for you all to sit there, and President Wacken, you in particular, you're in the hot seat, so for you to have the strength of character to sit and listen to the concerns of the community reflects really well on you, and I commend you for that, and I thank the board for giving us the opportunity to speak today. Trustee Pike, I love your hat, faith over fear. As a woman of faith, I really find myself looking into what we're called to do, and when somebody is attacking our Capitol in an effort to stop the peaceful transfer of power, when, you know, put Nancy Pelosi's politics aside, when somebody breaks into our home with the plan of kidnapping her and then asking her questions, and if she tells the truth as defined by this deranged lunatic, then, okay, but if not, he's going to break her kneecaps, and then to have individuals who are leaders, you know, President Trump's own son was mocking this, as though it was a joke that we, her husband may not survive. I mean, he has a skull fracture because he was beaten in the head with a hammer. We're talking an armed home invasion. As a former deputy district attorney, my prosecutor wheels are spinning, and I'm very happy that this guy's going to be facing many years of federal prison, but the reality is, we are in such a polarized, scary time right now that we need local leaders, like yourselves, like you, President Wacken, to take a stand and say, this is not okay, that we treat each other with dignity and respect, and we may have different ideas about how to go about politics or policy, but that's a strength, because you can't solve complex problems from one perspective. You have to pull from different ideas and values and making sure that we're taking everybody into account. And so for me, faith over fear is not just being socially convenient, is not just going along with the group that's been cool for a while, but saying, hey, guys, this, this stopped being cool, this isn't okay. We thoroughly vetted the election, we know that it was fair and free, we need to stop doing this. But President Wacken would really appreciate you using your position of power, of leadership, of influence, to set a tone of civility, not asking you to compromise your morals or your thoughts on how this country should be, but just bring down the rhetoric and the tone and encourage people to be kind with one another and to not be violent, or to not think that they get to talk about someone in a way that some deranged lunatic might think they're doing the world a favor by hurting them. I wouldn't want anyone to hurt my opponent for State Assembly, and I wouldn't want anyone to hurt me. At the end of the day, we are all parents, we're all, some of us are parents, a lot of us are parents, grandparents, we're neighbors, we're people who love this community and this state, and a lot of us are based in our faith. There's more that unites us than divides us, and I'm begging you to please use that position of power, find that strength in your faith, and just be a light. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Sarah Dobbinz, I live at 720 Riverside Drive, North Hudson, and I am here, as I was last month, to address the issue of President Wacken and the Oath Keepers. Many of us have asked you to denounce this group, and I feel by not denouncing them, frankly, you're complicit. That may or may not be fair, but that's what I feel. Before coming here, I was watching former Capitol Police Officer Michael Fanon, and you were speaking of tasers, and so was he, speaking of tasers. He was speaking of being pulled by the neck through the tunnel, a tunnel in the Capitol. He was beaten and he was tased multiple times with his own taser by the Oath Keepers. My question is very simple. Will you or will you, I don't know if you're still a member. There's no way for me to find that out. You say you're not, that's fine, I believe you. So will you or will you not denounce this group?
I don't respond to the public comments. I can't.
Okay.
I'll address that in a minute, all right?
Okay, that would be great, and, you know, I would urge you to perhaps watch the video of Mr. Fanon, former Officer Fanon, read his book. There were police officers killed that day by the Oath Keepers, by this group. They need to be denounced for what they are. They are traitors.
Going twice? On to item four, Paul.
Okay, so I was asked just to give some brief information on what this board can do pursuant to Wisconsin law to remove an elected official, a board member, and that is very limited. There's a few things that the board can do, and that would be by a majority, a vote of the majority of the board after due process hearing. Some are pretty straightforward, some are not. You know, one, a couple of them are just technical. If a board member moves out of the village, they vacate their seat, they're gone. If they're convicted of a felony, they're no longer eligible to serve on the board. But the other two are also fairly straightforward. There's two more causes. One is, and this is Wisconsin Statute 17.13, the inability of a board member to perform their duties, whether that's physically or mentally. And the other is a gross neglect of duty. There's no power of this board to remove someone for membership in an organization, religion, you can't throw them off if they're a Lutheran or some other religious. You know, that's what the elections are for, and we have one of those every two years, and that's where the public has the right to comment on the background and the values and the views of board members. But this board sitting here tonight really doesn't have the ability to tell one of these board members or the president, you know, we're going to kick you off. I just want to make that clear so everybody knows the playing field in that situation, because it sounds like there was some misinformation around. That's all I had.
Thank you, Paul.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
So I know that some communities in their ordinances have codes of conduct for elected officials, which we do not in the village have any code of conduct.
And some of them talk about acts compatible with the best interests of the municipality. They talk about conduct that fosters respect for government and other things. So if the village decided, the board and the residents decided that they wanted a code of conduct to help guide us, for instance, if someone on the board, I heard you say if someone was convicted of a felony, they would be off the board. What if someone was, someone was being prosecuted for a felony, would we have to still have them on the board? I mean, it sounds like we literally have no ability to look at the conduct of the board in regards to respect for government and law.
Well, I guess one thing I would say to that is that, you know, I go to a lot of municipal meetings, and I represent a lot of municipalities, and this board and this village operates at a high level. I mean, they show respect for fellow board members, the meetings are organized, public comment is allowed. Some places, that's not even allowed, and it's not required by the statute. Some places do have codes of ethics. Frankly, I don't think this community needs that. These meetings are run well. I think that all the board members put in their time, do their homework, and are active. You know, you can have that discussion if you want to, but, you know, you just, you can't, you know, people's personal beliefs are their personal beliefs. If they act and they don't let those personal beliefs affect the board and the operation of the government, you know, that's what they have.
And I want to say my question wasn't because I did not think that the board was acting appropriately, or that the board is respectful. I very much appreciate the tone and tenor of this board, and I do believe that everyone is respected on the board, but we do have, and this situation brings up, we don't have any guidelines for the board. If something did happen that the board wanted to take action, like I said, if someone really did something, committed a felony, there was, we'd have no room to do anything, because we don't have a code of conduct, which a lot of communities do have.
You won't even need the code of conduct.
Okay.
If they're convicted of a felony, they're not qualified to hold office and they're gone.
But, no, I didn't say convicted, if they were being prosecuted for a felony.
Then, you know, they're assumed to be innocent.
Right.
So you can't throw them off for being charged.
So other communities that have codes of conduct, what I'm hearing is they're not necessary. We don't have one because it's not necessary.
That's my opinion. There's a process to adopt those, and you can have ethics committees. I just, I don't feel it's necessary, but that's not my decision. I think this is, you know, a well-run group. I mean, I've been in a lot of places where you'd be shocked at what happens in some of these board meetings. People are abusive and out of line. One meeting, someone handed out hangman's nooses to board members.
Well, exactly. You're kind of making my point, Paul. Like, shouldn't we have some? But we don't, but we can't control what happens in every election, we can't control, you know, how people are, and it seems like we have no tools if we should need them.
Well, the biggest tool is the election. You know, I guess, you know, if the board wants to explore that, they can certainly go down that road, but really, the tool to talk about, you know, personal values and things like that is in the ballot box. It can't be really dictated by the board, other than, you know, you can't, you can't shout out and be abusive and everything else and disrupt the meetings. You know, you can't take financial gain being a board member, things like that. But, you know, your internal beliefs or the organizations that you belong to or don't belong to, that's personal.
I got my hand slapped a few times when I got on the board because I had to be reminded that this is nonpartisan board, and I would ask questions that seemed like they were leaning one way or the other, and the more I thought about and realized that we're supposed to be nonpartisan, you have to set personal beliefs aside and work with each other. That's what I kept being told. I think that's kind of what you're talking about, Paul.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, which is new business from the board or staff. And first on the deal is the president's comments. And I apologize to those of you that came last month and this month because I didn't make the meeting and was not able to make the meeting, and I tried to address once again the issues with Oath Keepers, but as I was, you know, reviewing stuff, I mean, back in 1770, John Adams, who's also one of the founders and a patriot, this is before the Constitution was written, and he said, "Facts are stubborn things, and whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence." Now, I've, and I'm sure there's going to be video here because I see people taking pictures of my, I mean, because I'm shocked at the, some of the statements that are being made, but I mean, I'm not going to address those. What your beliefs is your beliefs. But the, you know, I've said right from the very beginning, when this was first leaked from the AC, you're, one of those two groups, that I have not been a member of Oath Keepers for over 10 years. I can't make it any plainer than that. I have no influence in Oath Keepers, I did not attend any of their meetings, I did not go, you know, partake in any of their agenda items. So, and I just haven't been able to figure out why people, I mean, something that's that old and honestly, your little signs and stuff like that don't belong in local government, that's a fact. It would never come up in local government if you all hadn't brought it up, okay? Yeah, I hope you get that. You know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't do anything with, you know, with the village that is beyond my oath of office to the Wisconsin Constitution and the US Constitution, and my particular oath to try to protect the taxpayers as best I can, whether it's through different budget items or if it's through whatever. I have no influence on different things that I do that are going to be, you know, that are going to affect this board or the village. It's a nonpartisan issue, and obviously, Oath Keepers to, some, it's definitely a polarizing topic, you know, and so, again, it doesn't belong in public office. I'm not a member of Oath Keepers. There is no sense, I will not denounce them as the organization that they are, and I, because it's not the organization I belong to, and it's not the organization that has, that I have any effect on. I can say, oh my God, no, I'm denouncing you, and I'm sure that whole organization will fold up. You know, I mean, I'm sorry, it's just, you know, and also, I will not be resigning my position as president of this board. I've had numerous people that have said, you know, I'm glad you're sticking, you know, to what you believe, and that's what I do, I do whatever I believe. And so I will not be resigning, I will not be denouncing the organization. I hope that this satisfies your, I know it doesn't because, you know, I mean, it's, you know, until you, you know, hammer me enough times in the paper or whatever, that I'm going to change my mind, not going to happen. So I hope that addresses your issues. Next thing I got is, I'm done with the Oath Keeper issue, I hope you all are too, and I'm sure there'll be video out there of my facial expressions because, you know, the truth is a terrible thing to, you know, have or not have out there. Item B is, deer season's in full swing with the gun season opener beginning on the 19th, hoping for success and safety, and I hope, I'm wishing everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I know it's going to be a little tighter for folks this year because the price of everything is to the moon, and, you know, I just hope everybody has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And a reminder of that Sunday morning at the early AM, the clocks fall back, so reset your clocks so you don't miss church on Sunday morning, or check your services. So that's, that's all I have, Melissa.
Yeah, just a reminder that the general election is on Tuesday, November 8th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and in-person absentee voting is currently going on and will end this Friday on November 4th. We're open this Thursday and Friday until 5:00 PM. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes.
All righty. Let's go to, let's see, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Regional Meeting update. Um, let's go to, let's see, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Regional Meeting update. Mary, that's on there for you.
Yeah. Thank you, President Wecken and, and Melissa for making time on the agenda to talk about this issue. I know we've got a lot going on. On September 22nd, I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities meeting, and I know other board members were also interested in, in the meeting, and I was able to share some of the materials. The meeting was titled, "The Need to Reform Municipal, Municipalities' Partnerships with the State," and it was about the shrinking state aid and the impacts of levy limits on municipalities' ability to offer critical services, EMS, which isn't an issue for us, but fire, police, and public, and public works. Since 2011, they stated that the shared revenue provided by states to municipalities has decreased by 9%, while the spending that municipalities have on critical services has gone up 17%. That's like statewide. So what the state's giving back has gone down 9% and costs to municipalities have gone up 17% for critical services, police, fire, EMS, public works. Essentially, the decrease in state support with the impacts of having little or no new construction in most communities, I think across the state, it's less than 2%. We've been actually a little bit higher than other communities. And then the levying, the levy limits and increasing costs to municipalities for insurance, energy, and wages to retain and attract employees have really been resulting across the state in impacts in municipalities' ability to maintain their local services. And so what the league is asking is for the state to fix the formula and increase shared revenues and to fix the funding formula so that critical local services can be maintained across the state. What they're asking municipalities to do, they're asked to us, was to, which we always have, approve their resolution that they'll put forward, that they share with the legislature, but they're going more than that this year. They would like stories to share with local legislators and have municipalities invite local legislators, so Representative Zimmerman and Senator Stachol to our budget discussions and to share real specific information with them about how the levy limits and the decrease in local, or in state revenue has been impacting our ability to budget and to meet local services, local service needs. I know that we've done a tremendous job in maintaining the service levels that we have, but I also know that we're, we're getting to a breaking point with, and anyone who's looking at our, our budget, which is on the agenda today, it's hard to run anything with the small increase that we're able to have year to year to maintain our staff, to retain our staff. We're, we're lucky, we're really lucky. And we're just a very, one or two actions away from having real impacts on our ability to provide services. So that was their ask, and I'm just presenting that to the board. I know that the finance committee has already been meeting, but I'm sharing that information and, and hoping that we can think about how we can really try and communicate what's going on here and partner with our state representatives to make some changes that are really needed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for what Mary presented?
Uh, just one comment. The chamber met was a month ago, Stan, and that was pretty much across the board, what those guys all said, in each one of the communities around us that, they called it that thing, levy limit is just cramming us. So they were hoping as a chamber to also address the same issue with the state.
Yeah, and I've had discussions with both Shannon and Rob and stuff about this. They're very well aware of how, how we're getting pinched, so, so that's, you know, but it doesn't hurt to keep bringing it up for them because they need their reminders. Hopefully there'll be some change in Madison come Tuesday and we'll see if we can get stuff done.
Thank you, Mary, though. Thank you for attending, too.
Yeah, thanks. Good info.
Okay, anything else there? All right, Paul, anything from plan? Plan commission did not meet.
Nope.
Okay, item eight, Personnel and Finance Committee Recommendations, Claims Approval Requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move to approve the November 2022 non-recurring claims of $315,163.20?
Thank you. Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jen, uh, discussion?
What are those big numbers, Melissa?
Yeah, so one of the largest number, the 163,000, that's our first bond payment for the new bond we took for the Highway 35 project. And then the other DOT that is for some last bills for the Highway 35 project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. And since that's a claims, uh, Mary?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. B, Assignment of Unassigned Funds for the Future Purchase of Public Works Vehicle and Police Department Squad Approval Requested.
Stan, authorize the village administrator to transfer $15,000 to the Public Works Truck Assigned Fund and $15,000 to the Police Department Vehicle Assigned Fund from the Unassigned Fund balance.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
Just a little background on how this impacts us and the benefits or the impacts.
So this is something that the board tries to do each year, when we try to save some use of available funds towards new vehicles for the Public Works and the Police Department. So we move some money, if we're able to, into assigned funds. So when they purchase a new vehicle, the money comes from that instead of out of the regular budget.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Let's see, that's a transfer of funds, so Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is Revision to Employee Benefits, Approval Requested. See, number A is Change to Work and Office Hours.
Stan, I move to change the village hall hours on Fridays to be open 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, and full-time employees will receive paid lunch breaks. Additionally, revise the employee handbook to reflect these changes.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
So this kind of came about for, during our finance meetings of how we can make sure our employees want to stay here and stay here more. So they came up with a couple items that we thought would really help keep our employees here because we appreciate them so much and all the work that they're doing. So there's a couple changes they asked for, and we don't think it should affect our service, so that's where all these are coming from.
Thank you, Kirk. Anything else?
Well, I just want, I want to note that this is exactly what the previous item was about, that our levy limits are really squeezing our ability to, to do what we need to do, and this is a good, a good thing to do, to help support the staff and give them more flexibility and try and reduce some of the burden that they have. And I, I totally see that and I, I agree with that. I just think it's something that we should notice, that we are starting to have service impacts, and I'm not saying that anyone's going to be harmed by this, but it is a service impact and we really need to look at long, long-term. This is, this is a short-term fix. We really need to look at long-term fix.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of changing the workout, office hours, or the motion is presented, signal of I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. B, Change to Holiday Schedule.
Stan, I move to change the current, currently observed three half-day holidays, Friday before Easter, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve, two full days. In addition, add President's Day to the list of observed holidays, and then the employee handbook to be revised to reflect these changes.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, discussion?
So the, the seven full-day holidays, do we give Martin Luther King Day as a full-day holiday now?
No, there, we don't, not right now. They're not floating holidays, they're just the set holidays, and that's not one of them.
We should do that.
It did not come into conversation, but it's a good point.
Yeah, we should. So, um, is it too late to, I mean, I don't know, I would like to amend it, to add that.
Does it need to go back to the finance?
There isn't a financial impact.
No, no financial.
You can amend, do an amended motion.
I amend, I would like to amend that the village hall currently observes eight full-time holidays and, uh, and add the three half-days to be full days and add President's Day and the additional holiday would be Martin Luther King Day.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended, uh, uh, motion, signal of I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. See, Change to Employee Accrued Vacation Time and Bank.
Stan, I move to change the employee vacation accrual to include an additional eight hours of vacation time for each year of employment, starting in year seven, to a maximum of 184 hours in year 14. In addition, the maximum number of vacation hours that can be banked is increased to 250 hours, and the employee handbook to be revised to reflect these changes.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, discussion?
It's a great idea.
Purpose, you're married to three board, those people who've been here a long time.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Well, and that's, I mean, again, you know, with the monetary issues and stuff, you know, we're trying to have some kind of show benefits to the employees that, hey, we'd love to give you, you know, more money and/or whatever, but they're, and they're all very much aware of what, you know, the restrictions we have, so, uh, I think it's a great idea too. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the accrued vacation time and bank, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. And D is Vacation Time for Part-Time Employees.
Stan, I move to approve part-time employees working at least 1,040 hours annually do not receive any kind of paid leave. The proposal is to give, whoops, I'm reading the wrong thing. That's the way it is right now. I move to approve adding a vacation benefit for part-time employees working a minimum of 1,040 hours annually to include 24 hours a year with a maximum bank of 48 hours. Additionally, revise the employee handbook to reflect these changes.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the vacation time for part-time employees, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And D is Review of the Proposed 2023 Annual Budget, Discussion Only. Melissa, I think this is you.
Yes, this is just the summary. The public hearing will be held on November 15th. So this is just a summary of it. The budget summary that's required to be published has been published in the paper. The 2023 levy is set at $1,615,796, which represents the maximum allowable levy that can be taken. There's a levy increase of $5,606 from 2022. We had $28,681 or 1.971% of net new construction. However, our loan payments decreased by $23,076. So that is why the full, the net new construction is on there, but you have to take off for the loan payments. So that can be explained further at the public hearing. The village mill rate will be 2.81. The village revaluation resulted in an increase of over $205 million total assessed value in the village, which brought the mill rate down from 4.35. So our total assessed value of the village went from $369,916,000 up to $575,538,200. So that's what brought the mill rate down significantly to 2.81. Use of available funds will be used to purchase capital equipment for the Police Department and Public Works, so it won't be taken from the budget itself, it'll be use of available funds. And this amount includes $46,000 for a new Police Department squad. That was budgeted for this year, however, it was unavailable, so it's being rebudgeted for 2023. $17,100 for Police Department capital equipment. $13,450 for the 2023 share of the village revaluation. However, this amount is in a signed fund that was approved in 2020. $34,900 for Public Works capital equipment, and then $550 for Public Works office equipment. And then once again, I'll expand more on this at the budget public hearing, which is scheduled for Tuesday, November 15th at 5:00 PM. And you do have, the budget summary is on the website as well, you can view that, which shows the changes in the accounts. Yep.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions or comments?
Melissa, when we have the public hearing, I know last time you had like a historical view of the budget too. Will that be available? I, I think it's very telling when we look at things over the past five years to see how our budget is being eroded.
So like the 2021 and then 2022? Yeah, it goes back three, but yeah, I can get that to the board.
Yeah, well, I think to the public, I, because, I mean, because we're going to have to do some planning, we're going to have to do something. And people need to really understand that this is not sustainable, what we've got, and we need to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna manage to keep our services.
Right.
I think one, Mary, thing to point out though about your comment about sustainability, obviously there was an assessed value that one was increased, but if you look at that mill rate, that's almost a 35% decrease.
Right.
That's a very positive thing for residents in North Hudson.
It's positive for people when their taxes are maintained or sustained or go down for sure, but it's not positive if they need their streets plowed or if we can't maintain our law enforcement staffing or our public work staffing because we're not offering sufficient competitive wages to maintain people, so.
Yeah, and I think we all got the.
I think that's the balance we're trying to find.
I agree totally, and I think we all got the analysis that was provided to us by Melissa, based on the communities around us. So I think further discussion on that, you think you'll see that, hopefully we can address that.
Well, and, and I, I hear you, but we are currently doing all of that. So I mean, this idea of we're not going to be able to maintain it, I, I just don't like that verbiage. I understand where you're coming from, we've got to come up with different things, but it's, you're making it sound like we're not going to be able to keep doing this, and on the finance board, I don't believe that.
First couple of years I was here, we weren't able to give raises, and the last three, we have been able to give raises. It seems like financially, we're being administered better year by year, and I would also agree with them on the sustainability doesn't seem to be an unsustainable thing. It seems like we have been improving. So I'm not sure where the unsustainable is. I do believe the state.
By looking at the budget?
I do believe the state needs to fix it, and looking at the budget, what?
Looking at the budget, we don't, when you look at wages that need to go up, when you look at insurance that goes up, the energy costs that go up, all the things that go up, you can't maintain a budget at the same level indefinitely if costs are going up because there comes a point where you've cut and rearranged and done the other kinds of incentives to the point where you, there's nothing left. And I, we're not there yet, we're not at nothing left, and you guys are doing a good job, but we're, but another 10 years like this, it's not going to work.
Well, we are hoping the state will address the levy thing, for sure, because the numbers you gave about the difference, that's huge, with the cost of living and, and all the costs you just mentioned, and they haven't adjusted that formula at the state level, that is something that we really need to continue to address with.
Now, you call it 2011 since the last time it's adjusted, it's been a long time.
It has been.
And it's, it's, it affects not just, you know, a lot of communities are getting affected by this.
Well, a lot of communities are going to referendum, and I'm not saying that's where, that's where we are or should go, but that's something that, I mean, people need to understand if things don't change.
And communities are going to will taxes, they're putting taxes on their, on their, on their vehicles.
Absolutely, they are.
I just don't think we need to go that direction yet, I think we're doing fine. But it needs to say, change at the state level.
I don't, I don't feel like I'm like, can you, I don't feel like I'm like flapping my wings going, you know, this is, this is a, we're in a, we're falling down a hole right now, but I do think it makes sense that we need to really think about this, and it's a, it's a real thing, and so.
Yep. Thank you, though. Your point is correct, when you presented that League of Minnesota, you know, and it's, it's spot on. spot on.
There's an election on Tuesday. Elections have consequences. All right, review proposed, no, we did that. Public Works, Brian?
Stan, we did meet, we had one thing to bring forward, the snow and ice removal contract. I moved that we approve the November 1st, 2022, to August 31st, 2023, snow and ice contract with Zappa Brothers.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
It went down 1,000.
This is another one of those numbers that we have to praise Patrick for, before Patrick showed up. Do you remember what this used to be at?
It was 20?
What?
How much we would contract.
Well, we weren't doing much of the plowing.
No, but it just shows how much Patrick has done, and I would like to thank you for all your hard work of bringing the people in and doing that and bringing this number down, so we don't need them for, we only need them for emergencies, not day-to-day. So, thank you, Patrick.
Public Works budget continues to go down, and, and you got to praise him for that. He's doing a stand-up job in that position, so kudos to you, sir.
Very much agreed.
How do we get the camera over to you?
He's hiding.
Thank you, Patrick.
He's hiding in space.
All righty, let's see, we got a vote on the contract, and I think that's a spending, so, Mary?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. Ten, Public Safety Committee Recommendations, Tim?
Stan, we did meet, but we have nothing to carry forward at this time.
Thank you. Number 11 then is Public Welfare Committee Recommendations. Kirk, is there?
We did not meet.
Okay, how about your park board?
We did meet, but we have nothing to bring forward.
Okay. All right, the next item is 13, which is convening to closed session. The board may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent one, parent lowercase g, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village of North Hudson, who is rendering oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted, and, you know, litigation or being involved with respect to remaining EMS funds. And then, B is making, being in the closed session. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Sorry, didn't see what. And see, so that's 19.851C, consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation. Do we have two separate motions? Paul? Yep. Okay. So, I want to address A.
Move to approve A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kirk. And.
Move to approve B? Oh, we got to vote on these one at a time?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor of closed session for the, discuss EMS funds, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And.
Move to approve B?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of going into closed session for the, to discuss employment promotion compensation, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And I guess we're in closed session.